Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Regular Meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Wednesday, January 15, 2025.
Trustee Harris again.
President.
Trustee Harris. Trustee Lee. Trustee Morales.
Present.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Trustee Bazinski.
Present.
Okay, Chairman, we do have a quorum and... Trustee Broderick?
The Board has received a notice submitted by the trustee Broderick that she'd like to attend virtually today. The trustee will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the trustee's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by a majority of the member of the Board physically present. Since no such motion is made and seconded, the request by the trustee to attend the meeting electronically will be deemed approved. Item 1.1.3, I'm going to ask Dr. Carl Brooks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.2, Communications, Kelly Roder Tenelli.
Good evening and Happy New Year, everyone. I love doing this, and I love that I get to start out the meeting talking to you again about how our partnerships drive collective progress. And so, you know, we serve parts of seven counties, it's 1,400 square miles, but tonight I'm really happy to invite a neighbor, a group who operates just across the road on Hobart Road, to be our celebrated and acknowledged partner tonight, and that's Strand Associates. Strand is a full-service consulting engineering firm with over 500 staff and expertise in civil, environmental, transportation, structural, electrical, instrumentation, and mechanical engineering. Strand has 12 offices nationwide, including the one across the street from us in Joliet on Hobart Road. For us, Strand has been a vital partner across different opportunities, including a very large and very successful food drive for our students in December, a Hobart Road cleanup day as part of Earth Month, and in fact, hiring our students from the CAD program. So just in relation to the food drive, I want to thank the college's Community Services Employee Resource Group, Office of Student Activities, Facility Services, Campus Police, scores of employees, many are here tonight to celebrate this, Maria Ana, Margot Underwood, Judy Connolly, I'm going to forgive folks, but a lot of you are involved in this, and we thank you for that, and you really did make it a success. So here to share in the celebration is Ana Raimandi. She's been with Strand since 2021. She's a member of the Clean Water Discipline Group at Strand and is passionate about helping local communities provide sustainable, safe, and tasty water to its residents. She's also the coordinator of the Joliet Strand Annual Food Drive that takes place before Thanksgiving each year to provide food for those in need of Joliet, and this year the recipient for our students. And so, please join in welcoming Ana.
Hi, Board, thank you so much, Kelly, for the introduction. I'm super happy to be here today to highlight the Strand and JJC partnership that we've had over the years and the recent flourish in our partnership as of this past year. So as Kelly touched on, we do have many people from our office that are drafters that went to Joliet and were in the CAD classes and are now drafters with us as engineers, and we are hoping this year actually to continue that partnership by hopefully coming into some of those CAD classes, the senior-level CAD classes. Our Director of Operations is hoping to come in and speak about drafting careers. So if anybody is interested, and then if anyone's continuing to stay in the area, we're right across the street, so we think that would be a great opportunity to continue that partnership. She also touched on the cleanup as well. We have Dominic Gaton in our office, I won't take all the credit, but he's a huge environmentalist, and he'll do some street cleanups, and he'll, of course, rally up the troops when the JJC street cleanup happens as well each year. But for me, the most thing I'm most prideful about is the food drive that we had this past year. So every year Strand does a food drive, and I've run it for the past three years. We used to donate to Global Tapernackle Pantry, which was a church in Joliet. They recently had to close their doors, unfortunately. However, I got connected with JJC after that. So the woman that I was speaking with suggested that JJC would be a great partner to have, and when I knew they were right across the street, I thought, what could be better? Our whole goal with that food drive is to make sure that we are serving and giving back to our community. So what better to do than right across the street to our students here? So we actually collected a record-breaking, over 1,800 pounds of food this past November, December, and donated all of it here to JJC. So the students were able to be fed, the pantry was able to be stocked, and I know it's continuing to do that. That was a nice food supply, and we plan to continue that partnership and do it again this year, right before Thanksgiving. So we're really looking forward to continuing this partnership and growing it even more.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Item 1.3, Proclamations, 1.3.1, African American History Month. Dr. Carl Brooks.
Thank you, Chairman Bazinski. Members of the Board of Trustees and those in attendance at this evening's meeting, both physically and virtually, it gives me great pleasure to introduce JJC student Amari Davis, who has graciously agreed to read the JJC proclamation, which recognizes the month of February 2025 as African American History Month. Before Amari reads the proclamation, I'd like to share a little bit about her. Amari is a sociology major with a strong academic focus on urban sociology and Black Studies, passionate about understanding societal dynamics. Amari is actively involved in campus life, participating in Black Student Union, TRIO, Phi Theta Kappa, and student government. These extracurriculars provide opportunities to develop leadership skills, advocate for diversity and inclusion, and contribute to the academic and social well-being of the campus community. I also like this year that, after meeting Amari earlier today, she expressed that she is scheduled to graduate at the end of this spring 2025 semester. So I'm very excited about that. So I humbly present to all of you, Amari Davis.
Thank you, thank you. Before I begin reading, I'd first like to thank the Board and my advisor for giving me such a wonderful opportunity to read the proclamation in honor of this year's upcoming Black History Month. Whereas the contributions of the citizens of the African American ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant, and whereas these contributions deserve recognition, and whereas citizens of the African American ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District Number 525, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaims January 31, 2025 through February 28, 2025, as African American History Month in Illinois Community College District. Number 525, and will raise the African American History Month flag in celebration of its students and community. Thank you.
This time I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Amari.
Thank you, Amari.
Item 1.3.2, Career and Technical Education Month, Josh West.
Chairman, I think we have a little bit of a switch there. Dr. Gray will take it from here.
Thank you, thank you both. I have the pleasure of introducing Diego Figuero Masias, who is an architecture student, American Institute of Architecture Students Club member, and a student worker for the Architecture, Engineering, and Construction Management Programs. He comes to us from the Kankakee Area Vocational Center, and it is his second semester at JJC. After graduating from JJC, he does plan to transfer to the Illinois Institute of Technology in the future, so he is a great choice to read our CTE proclamation for this month.
Hello, thank you, everyone, for your time. Proclamation. Whereas February 1st to the 28th, 2025, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas, career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for career readiness. Whereas, the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators in partnership with business and industry stimulate the growth of our regional economy and nation by preparing graduates for high-wage, in-demand careers, whereas, career and technical education at JJC affords individuals with opportunities to learn new skills across more than 50 programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaims the month of February 2025 as Career and Technical Education Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 15th day of January 2025.
Some...
Second. No call for motion?
We have a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Retirement Recognition, 1.4, Dr. Amy Gray.
Thank you very much, Chairman Bazinski. The first person I have the pleasure and the honor of talking about this evening is Rosie Holloman. Rosie has been an essential member of our Certified Nursing Assistant Team and a CPR instructor for over 22 years, and contributed an impressive 34 years of experience in the field of nursing. She's brought a wonderful combination of discipline, of passion, and strength to her teaching of our future students, and she did share with us that she will genuinely miss all of that. She has referred to JJC as her second home, where she really enjoyed every moment, especially being in the classroom. Rosie will embrace precious moments with her family, especially sharing her time with her mother, though she will be greatly missed here at JJC.
Need a motion to accept her recognition?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Did I say something?
Absolutely.
Yes, welcome.
We've earned it.
Good evening, everyone. It is definitely a pleasure to be here, even in this cold weather, but I just want to share that JJC has been a home to me for so long, and even though I work two jobs, I work for the Joliet Public Schools in addition to coming here for 22 years, and every night that I stepped into that classroom, I was excited. When I wrote my letter of resignation, I cried, so I'm typing and crying, typing and crying. But I just want to say I would like to thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this family, and I also want you to know that this institution has helped me and my family get my daughter through medical school, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gray, item 1.4.2, Kathleen McCollum. Again, I have the pleasure and the honor of recognizing Kathy McCollum, who has been
in our Fin Arts Department for 26 years and has served as a passionate and dedicated educator and colleague who truly cared about her students' success. Her focus on engagement and ensuring that her students were prepared for their careers through updated resumes and interviewing skills shows a commitment not only teaching academic content, but also fostering practical, real-world skills that has served them so well. She was always willing to try new ideas for her students to learn and to grow. She was supportive of her students while ensuring high expectations and rigor. She has been a very valued colleague by all and will definitely be missed as well.
Need a motion to accept her retirement?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 1.4.3, Michael Riola, Karen Thistle.
We are recognizing the retirement of someone who has been an integral part of Joliet Junior College family for over three decades, Michael Riola. He's not here with us this evening. Mike started with us in June of 1992, and throughout the years, he has been a constant presence, ensuring that our campus was always clean, safe, and welcoming for our students, faculty, and staff. His hard work, reliability, and dedication to the college are deeply appreciated. Mike has always gone above and beyond in his role, and we've come to rely on his quiet yet steadfast commitment to making our environment a better place. Beyond his daily work, Mike has been an active member of the Facilities Services Department Safety Committee, where his insights and commitment to maintaining a safe environment have helped keep us all secure. He has also served as a union steward, advocating for the rights and well-being of his colleagues, always with a sense of fairness and respect. Outside of his work at JJC, Mike is passionate about long-distance bike riding, and we know that biking has not only been a hobby for him, but also a way to challenge himself and find balance. It's that same drive and perseverance that has been evident in everything he's done here with us. Mike, we thank you for your years of service, your dedication, and the positive impact you've made on all of us. Your presence will be missed, but we're excited for the next chapter in your life. We wish you many more happy, healthy, and adventurous rides ahead. Congratulations on your retirement, Mike. Thank you for all your years of service.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 1.5, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
We do. Chairman Bazinski, tonight we have Luke Galloway, who is requesting to address the Board on the relationship between the students and the school administration. And I just want to say, as a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meetings. Per Policy 015501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the Board, keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, evolvent, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure.
Hello, JJC community, President Muwa, the esteemed Board. When I've stood here in the past, I spoke about the power of the student voice, but there's something else I want to prioritize tonight. With the presidential inauguration quickly approaching, there's a palpable sense of uncertainty among many of our students when it comes to processing the implications of the upcoming administration. The promise is that have already been made, and what that means for us as students and our futures. The pathway forward is uncertain, so much is unknown, and even with the semester starting, there's still an uncomfortable pervasive tenseness that all students can feel. While the intersection of federal policy with our institution was a key issue last semester, like when the Board took action on Title IX, what I'd like to talk about are the potential far-reaching consequences any actions from the top may have, because there are people I care about who are scared, vulnerable students who have as much right to feel included as anyone, who are unsure what the future holds for them. As President Muwa has stated, the through line between political rhetoric to policy to what's put into practice isn't always completed. What I'm especially concerned about are possible threats to federal financial aid, especially with calls to absolve and abolish the Department of Education, as well as possible reversals on Title IX policy and protections, as well as whether we're supporting all of our students, regardless of their identities. I've been advised that there's very little that our Board actually does in terms of introducing policy on these specific issues, especially social issues, that isn't passed down by the federal government, which we have to comply with, or the Illinois State Government, the ICCTA, or other bodies. So I'm speaking from an institutional perspective, what policy we can introduce, and the impact of our individual actions. And this is where I'd actually like to praise the Board, because I felt the shift since I started attending, and since me and my fellow students started advocating for improvement and for accountability, and I hope will continue on that path this semester. The point I want to make, and what I want you all to think about, is that on the whole, student advocacy is a very simple proposition that everyone can agree with without sacrificing your personal beliefs. The wellness of the students, all of our students, correlates with the wellness of the surrounding community, both as a short-term and long-term investment, and we all know this to be true. The students have shown that we stand in solidarity. We all rise together, and we all fall together, but it's not our turn, it's yours. So in conclusion, what I'd like to ask tonight is that you publicly budge your support for our students, that you promise, as many of you have already, to stand with our students, and that you will promote the values of our institution even in the face of uncertainty, because those values are integral to our identities as members of the JJC community. Our institution has won nationally-recognized awards praising our inclusivity. We can lead the nation again. If we sacrifice our integrity now, then we lose everything that we've worked for. It's time that the students know unequivocally who stands with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more student comments? Thank you. Item 1.6, A Moment of Silence, Dr. Muwa.
Chairman Bazinski and members of the Board, I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence, actually, two moments of silence. One will be during my president's report, but for now, a moment of silence for the following. Mary and Leonard Pavlik, parents to Michael Pavlik, adjunct faculty member in our Social and Behavioral Sciences Department. Dr. Carolyn Tomasic Angers, JJC employee for 32 years, retiring in 2000 as Dean of Counseling, GSD and advising. And lastly, the victims of, and all affected by the Palisades fire in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Dr. Muwa. Moving on to item 1.7, Selected Reports.
Before we move on, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the student trustee report to the following, right before the selected, to be the first of the selected reports, and I'd need a second to allow that.
I'll second that motion. Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Broderick? Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, under Selected Reports, I'm going to call Trustee Queenie to give the student report.
Thank you.
Good evening, JJC community members, faculty, staff, administration, and members of the Board. My name is Ryan Queenie, as all of you know, and my pronouns are they/them. Thank you for making time to be here tonight for the meeting. So I don't have a big report, so I just wanted to highlight that Welcome Week has kicked off this week with students returning to classes for the spring semester. Today, they had Christopher Carter on the bridge, which is a mentalist that was putting on a performance for students, and then also, they were giving away, as you see on the dais, the free Stuff Your Own Squishy Pillows, as OSA has told me they are called. And then tomorrow, they will have the, they will be partnering with Career Services to host hired, career-themed game show, and they will also be doing Wax Hands on the Bridge for students. Next, I just want to highlight some of the upcoming events here on campus. As I said, or I haven't said yet, but as you know, Main Street is coming up. On Wednesday, which, on Wednesday, May 29th, it will start with the theme being Pizza and Pajamas, where OSA will be giving away free pajama pants to students, as well as on Wednesday, the 29th, Custom Metal Street signs, which I'm sure many of you have seen around campus that have different names, and they're in many people's offices. And then also, on Thursday, the 30th, they'll be doing free magic snow globes, which I haven't seen those, but I'm excited to see what those will turn out to be. And then, the Office of Student Rights and Responsibilities is hosting their Speedmates series in February to help promote healthy relationships and promote their recognition of February being Dating and Sexual Violence Awareness Month, and they will be hosting on February 13th a friendship-forming event to help teach students the basics of forming connections, then on the 19th, talking to students about boundary setting, and then to finish off the series, they will be talking about healthy relationships on the 25th. And then, many of you know, the Black Student Union Gala is coming up on the 21st of February in the U auditorium from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, or 9:30 PM, and tickets will be going on sale soon, but I haven't heard a date yet for that. And then, I just wanted to give a quick update about the student trustee project for community college baccalaureate degrees. As I've talked to a few of you about, this spring, I'm going to be starting working with students to begin letter-writing and reaching out to legislators in the Springfield Legislative Congress to help bring legislation forward, hopefully to get it passed in Illinois so we can start offering certain programs that will be baccalaureate degree programs for students. With that, that is all I have for my report tonight, and I thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Item 1.7.1, Dr. Farmer is going to present the ERP Optimization and Modernization Update.
Okay, Dr. Muwa, any additional information you want to share before we begin the presentation today?
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Board of Trustees, this is a follow-through on our commitment to provide regular and ongoing updates. I think today's presentation in particular will be noteworthy to this Board, especially those who have been connected to the project for many, many years. So as Dr. Farmer and I had a conversation prior to this board meeting, you know, the year 2018 came up. Board action took place in 2019, I believe, so, you know, this is five to perhaps six, perhaps seven years in the making, and I don't want to steal Dr. Farmer's thunder here too much, but she's going to offer some really exciting information in regards to the upcoming roadmap and timeline, and how we're approaching really the end of the restart and the beginning of the optimization and modernization. Dr. Farmer, take it away.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Muwa. Thank you for setting the stage for this presentation this evening. So good evening, Chairman Bazinski, also the trustees of the Board, including the JJC community, and Happy New Year, everyone. So before I start, I just want to remind the Board of Trustees that you continue to be true ambassadors to our ERP initiative. I want to take the moment to personally thank you for your commitment, for your hard work and your support. So Chairman Bazinski, thank you. Vice Chairman Morales, thank you. Secretary Nancy Garcia, again, thank you. Trustee Lee, thank you. Trustee Lee, thank you. I'm going to take my glasses off to give you direct eye contact. Trustee Harris, thank you. Trustee Stamburski, thank you. Trustee Queenie, thank you. And Trustee Broderick, we know that you are online, thank you for your commitment. So tonight, I have a lot of information to share with you today. Board members, if you recall, at the November board meeting, the board approved for the administration to move forward what we call a very comprehensive review of our infrastructure, an architect review of the college. So I'm excited that we're moving forward with that process, but I'm going to share that information towards the end of this presentation. So we remain committed to the four principles of the strategic plan and also to the ERP process. We have four guiding principles, and most of you know the four guiding principles. One, we want to continue to be transparent, continue to have open communication with you regarding the ERP, and then also, we want to honor the voices of every single individual who is involved in this process. And then, most importantly, we would like to address some of our challenges, because with any ERP, you will have challenges with confidence due to all the support that we offer. So Dr. Namua mentioned this already, the ERP restart, we restarted, it's done. Now we're moving forward with the ERP optimization and modernization. So I wanted to make sure that we had clear definitions of what that means to us at Joliet Junior College. We are optimizing, specifically Workday. We've been doing this for the past two years now. But what's important to us at JGC is to be more modern, to modernize our technology. We want to be advanced. It's important for us to infuse new advancements in terms of technology, and of course, Trustee Broderick, I know you have questions about AI. We're definitely looking at AI and infusing that in our technology as we move forward. Board of Trustees, you recall this slide in November, where I outlined that by achieving optimization and modernization milestones, we really have to think about investing in additional resources for our ERP. And those additional resources, I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but we talked about investing in a customer relations management system, what we call our CRM. We talked about making sure that we look at our integration process, and the list goes on and on. So we made a very strategic decision regarding the ERP process. We made a decision to revise our go-live process for colleague SAS. So I'm going to take a moment, and I have two individuals to stand up. One would be Karen Kissel, Vice President Karen Kissel, if you can stand up, please. And the other would be Dr. Chris Osweko. So the third person would be Lisa Richardson, who's our project manager, and unfortunately, she's not with us today. But I call the four of us the Fearless Four, because we have moved forward with implementing our, you know, process of going live and changing the date to June to December. And let me tell you, if you notice on the side of this PowerPoint, we moved forward with revising the date with no cost to the college. Can we pause on that? So due to the hard work and the commitment of four individuals, those individuals standing up today, thank you for your commitment in helping us to move forward with revising our timeline, and really doing it in a way to support our students and individuals involved in the process, and doing it at no cost. So thank you. Just give them a round of applause. So you're probably wondering why we decided to move forward with changing the go-live date, and I just wanted to give you a clear rationale why we made that decision. You know, again, we want this project to be successful, and success also means we need more time, because if you recall, we had a lot of foundational work that we had to accomplish, over 7 million data points that we had to clean up, right? But probably the most reason why we decided to move forward with changing the go-live date is because of our employees. Fatigue is real, and as Dr. Namua indicated, we've been on this journey since 2018. So this gives us a little bit more time to work with the team, to really come up with more strategies to support this process. Now, Board of Trustees, once again, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support. If you recall, aligned with our decision of changing the go-live date, we also are implementing a comprehensive assessment plan. It's an opportunity for the college to review the technology architect of the college. It's not an IT process, it's a college-wide process, where we're really looking at the architect, and really looking at assessing and providing analysis of the infrastructure. And that will be in partnership with our Campus Works partners. I'm excited to tell you that the project has already started. We met with our project manager, her name is Teresa Fort from Campus Work. She's working on putting together a very comprehensive timeline in which we will evaluate the current enterprise architect, will look at our integration, and they'll provide us some actionable recommendations and create what we call an IT comprehensive plan for the college, which we've never had before. So Board of Trustees, if you recall, I indicated that I will come to you with a comprehensive budget. We had an ERP restart budget, and the next budget that we will draft will be an ERP optimization and modernization budget. However, we're going to move forward with the assessment first. We want to make sure that we do a comprehensive assessment, and then that budget will be prepared and shared with all of you for support. So at this time, I will entertain any questions regarding the project. We are excited, we're moving forward, but we're moving forward with confidence and support because of all of your support for our employees, and most importantly, for our students. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
I do.
Trustee Broderick, I hear you. Your question, please.
Thank you. In regards to when we move it from June to December, will that have the enhancements, or will we be back where we were when we started with it, and then move forward with the enhancements? I'm trying to understand the development of it.
When you say enhancements, what are you referring to, please?
The things that are now current. I'm going to say current things that we should be working for, for enhancements to where we are now, or where we should have been when we started this program, this process back in 2019. The goals that we wanted to achieve to be better, or will we be at the same level that we were when we were at 2019?
No, absolutely not. Of course, with the enhancements, we want to be better, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
To simplify things, because this is such a complicated topic.
Yeah.
On getting all that data transferred over.
Yes.
Percentage-wise, how's that going? And, right, because there was so much for the student portion.
Yes.
All of the little things, how's that, how's that going?
That's going well. Again, we, again, we had over.
I won't hold you to it, but like, do you have in your head maybe a percentage of how well we're doing on getting all that transferred over?
What do you think, Dr. Osweko? What do you think we're at in terms of percentages? It's a good question.
Thirty-five, forty, somewhere in there. Data cleanup work was by far the most intensive work we've done to date. We did our first data in migration to the cloud, so we've been successful in that. So we've made great progress. Integration and report writing is next, and that's going to be a very large process, but probably thirty-five, forty.
And are we hopeful that this is all going to work out?
I'm hopeful, and I think the administration is hopeful, and most importantly, I think our employees are, because the fact that we've changed the go-live date to allow for more time and support and resources, I truly believe we made a wise decision.
We're hopeful that we're going to hit that goal date.
Absolutely, yes, yes. Good question, thank you.
Can I ask the same question instead of hopeful, say confidence?
Yeah, I'm just going to be hopeful.
We're going to be hopeful, yes.
Look, she said, we're going to stick with hopeful, we like that word.
Thank you.
I have a question.
More of a comment.
Okay, sure.
So moving, just to your point, moving over the amount of data that that is, it hides behind like a 35% number. I recently backed up all of my photos, and that took hours, and I can only imagine the amount of data that has to be sifted through, and then you have to write special scripts to help get things all into proper order for a new system, so that is an incredible amount of work, and I just want to highlight how good of a job that is, how difficult that is. Awesome work.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
With all the other questions, I might as well throw one in there. I'm just curious, now, as you guys move forward, do you have a process of testing?
Oh, yes.
And you have like, like a little side part where you can throw it all in to see the results, and you're happy with those results?
Well, we haven't started testing yet, but we have a process of testing all of the data, including the system itself. That's correct.
Good, good.
That's a part of the roadmap.
Okay, okay.
Will you personally try to fill out your own application and do it all, just to see if it works? No, I'm just.
Hey, that's a great challenge for the entire cabinet, Dr. Namua.
You know, I agree. I agree, Trustee Lee, that's a great challenge.
A good talent, yes, thank you.
Just to see how fluent it is. I might do it myself, you never know.
Okay.
After full implementation.
After full implementation, you know.
Yes. Any other, any additional questions?
I just want to thank you for your report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.2, the Faculty Union Report. Kurt Ward, please.
Good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And if it's the new year, that means I'm officially the new full-time Faculty Union President. And quite frankly, in a lot of ways, that scares me to death. And part of it is, I really got to begin by acknowledging the 22 years of service that Dr. Marsink provided prior to me assuming this role in January. For most of us in this room, he's the only full-time Faculty Union President we've ever known. You know, 22 years of service, 18 as the president, and you know what I'm most grateful for right now? His office is right down the hall from mine, and he's moved up to number one on my speed dial list, and he is graciously, obviously, he's going to be around for another semester, and he's most gracious in his support, so I really, really appreciate that. And Dr. Gray, during the winter break, I tried desperately to turn off the computer and the cell phone. I didn't do so well, you know me well enough to know that's probably the case, but I did something that I don't usually do. I ended up watching a movie during the holidays. It's Mr. Holland's Opus, okay? And honestly, I've seen it before, and probably most of us have seen it many times. And, you know, the movie celebrates, in a lot of ways, a way a starving musician can support his habit, but it turned out he was a great teacher, right? But as I watched this movie, I realized he wasn't the hero or even the heroine of this movie, right? There was a student in the class, the very first year he taught, okay, and he referred to her as Ms. Lang. You will know, you will remember, because she was the clarinet student, who for the lack of, not for the lack of trying, and the lack of his effort, she struggled to play the clarinet. And trust me, I had a daughter who went through that, and so I know the pain, all right? And then she kind of disappears from the movie, right? And we don't hear of her again until the very end. At that point, she's introduced as Ms. Gertrude Lang, Governor of the State of Oregon. And she was there 30 years later to honor his service. And I thought, you know what? She's the real hero here. And I thought, I wonder how many students we have walking the hall today that are Gertrude Langs? We just don't know it, right? And, you know, I guess if I was Mr. Holland, you know, I would be thrilled to know that maybe I had a small part in her success. And obviously, it wasn't in music, it was in something entirely, completely different, but guess what, it probably, probably contributed. So, and so to finish my story, I guess, she should be an inspiration to all of us, not only the faculty, but the staff and the administration who worked so hard to make it easy for us to do what we do, because you just never know, maybe your student's going to be the next governor of the state, or something even greater. So anyway, to finish my story, so that inspired me, but I'm one of those people that, I guess, about January 2nd, I started doing the typical internet search, you know, 2025, year of, you know, put in a question mark to see what comes up. And I was troubled, because the first thing that came up was Chinese New Year was the snake, and I'm going to be honest with you, I hate snakes. I grew up on the farm, and I've never gotten over that fear, all right? But I've decided instead, it should be 2025, you're the student. And if there's any question, we just need to look and see what Ms. Gertrude Lang accomplished, and I think we'll all be better because of it. So with that, let's have a great spring semester. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.3, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report. Dr. Barbara Wilhen.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Happy New Year, everyone. I hope you've had a good start to your January. We welcomed in our new adjuncts and many of our returning adjuncts last Thursday night. We got to meet AI Klein. That was really wonderful. It's been such a wonderful journey here. I would concur that our students and what they, what they become is an amazing part of being a teacher, and being part of any educational institution. I'm proud to say that I have the same cell phone number that I had when cell phones started. I have, I have gone through, I had the poster in my room once of the evolution of the cell phone, and I had them all. Needless to say, I'm old. However, it is, it's very interesting to see, when every once in a while, I'll get a Facebook post, or an Instagram post, or just actually a text, because my students, I gave my number to them back then, and I give it to them now, they'll check back in with me, and it is a great thing. One of my students that I taught at the college level in biochemistry became a patent attorney, and I'm still in contact with her 30 years later, and it's really wonderful to have that. We are, we have just begun our negotiations with JGC and the JUAC, and I feel like we've made a really wonderful start. We've got a wonderful group, and we're looking forward to a swift and mutually beneficial contract that be developed. So thank you very much, and we'll be back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.4, I'd like to direct your attention to the big screen for the JGC Foundation Report. Kristi Mulvey.
Yay, that would be me. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year from the Foundation. I'd like to start out by saying that this morning, we had a meeting, and we have a new president for the next two years. Mayor Chris Brown, the Mayor of Morris, will be the president of the Foundation for the next two years. We have two new, two of our board members that are moving up to the executive board. They're Chris Freeman, who will be our treasurer, and Larry Weirz, who is the retired superintendent of school for Troy. So we're really happy with our slate of officers and our board. As Klein mentioned during his moment of silence, a very dear friend of mine and of the college, Dr. Carolyn Angers, passed away two days before Christmas. I've been taking Carolyn out for lunch for my whole time here, 24 years. She was the registrar at the college, she was the director of advising and counseling, and when Carolyn found out about our three-plus-one program, she was over the moon, and was the first person to donate and set up an endowment for that program. As sad as it is, we have the positive. As sad as it is, we have the positive news of her love for Joliet Junior College. The majority of her estate will be given to the foundation, which includes her house and a lot of other financial support. So according to her wishes, she did not have a public wake or service. But in March, I'm going to, the foundation is going to host a memorial luncheon in Carolyn's honor for all of our retirees. So we're in the process of getting that word out. Scholarships are frantically, are being put on students' accounts so they don't get dropped for spring. And I'm pleased to say that, again, we will be over $1 million of scholarship support for our students in this academic year. As you know, we have the sock sale every year. This year, we have star socks. Socks, I think it goes along with our planetarium and what's going on in the planets. And those socks will be on sale on February 3rd. I'll have Karen R. send all the trustees a link where you can order them online, and then we'll mail them right to you, or you can pick them up in my office. But all that money goes to our alumni campaign. I'm pleased to say that we're only halfway through the year, and our total annual giving is currently at $2.7 million, which is 1.8 million increase over the last year. And that is not with Dr. Solfranc's $4 million that is to come. Paul Ganser's $100,000, and another board member's $50,000. So I'm hoping that we will be at least a $45 million foundation by midsummer. That's the end of my report unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question. Kristi, when do we close for scholarships? When is that deadline?
The scholarships for spring are already closed. They closed November 30th. Then the grades were put up, and then we give them away now. Then for fall, we'll post February 1st, and we'll keep those open until mid-May, and then that will be for our fall semester.
Okay, so the next opening is February 1st, and that'll go through mid-May?
Yes.
Okay, and that's for the fall semester?
Yes. And we use our communication center. The students get tons of text messages, directly calls. And so they know, you know, when it is, and we definitely had an increase in scholarship applications. But if you ever know of a student that's in need, you know, we always get special circumstances. Faculty will refer a student to me. We always can help a student. So if they've missed the deadline and you have someone that is in need, please bring them forth to my office, because we don't want any student not to attend because of financial reasons.
Got it. Do you know if any of the admissions folks are mentioning this when they're out recruiting students for the fall semester? That right now, if they're visiting high schools, this is when they need to be letting them know that the scholarships will be opening in February, so that when they get here in the fall, they can have a scholarship.
Right.
Is that something that you speak with the admissions department about?
Yes, so I met with Rosa Salazar. She has all the information. We have, it's in the shape of Wile E. the Wolf. And those cards are passed out to all the students when they're at the high schools. The other thing that we've been doing is we've been doing step-up days, where we bring admissions, recruitment, and scholarships right to the high schools. So those will start in the next couple of weeks. I sent a personal note and the information about our Honors College and about our merit scholarships and our scholarship dates to all 140 counselors before we left on Christmas break. Each of the schools, 26 schools, got a packet, and every counselor got a handwritten letter from me inviting them to help me identify honor students, merit students, and to let the students know that scholarships will be open in February. My scholarship manager, Kelly Baker, has been with us for a long time. She has a listserv with all the counselors, and she's constantly updating and putting out the information to the schools. So I think we have a really good communication plan, because we are seeing an increase each year.
Thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. That's really amazing to hear, over a $1.7 million increase. Is that what you said? Was that what it was? Was that the number?
1.8 million over last year, yeah. And you know, the biggest area that we're seeing success in is our alumni. We're 107 gifts over where we were last year at this time. Alumni alone brought in 1.2 million. And when you look at all of our major gifts, you know, Weidendorf and Ganser and all these people were alumni of the college. So our alumni program is so important. If you haven't viewed Jen Davis's podcast, we're really proud of that. It's part of our Roots and Branches program. We have 500 people that have registered for that podcast. You know, in the big scheme of fancy social media, that's not a huge number. But it's great for us. We're happy, and we see that that's increasing. So if you haven't listened to any of the podcasts, you just recently had John Williams from WGN on, and he came here personally on campus. He's going to be the next recipient of our Alumni Achievement Award. But Jen's doing great things with our alumni program. And $1.2 million in six months from our alumni is just phenomenal.
Thank you.
And Kristi, I'm really excited about what I hear when I hear all of what you've done and what the other community colleges can't believe that JJC is doing. You're such a leader in this whole foundation that they are amazed at how well we are thriving. And you are the dying leader on it. So we're so glad to be here.
I've been at the company a long time, but I love my job. And you know, I'm one person, and I have a great team. I'm so thankful. But I'll tell you, when these donors give to the college, I go directly to Dr. Namuwa and say, could you make a phone call? Can you send a letter? Can you take somebody to lunch? And he is very receptive. And, you know, they want to meet the president. They want to see the president. And I can't thank him enough. I've worked for five presidents. But he is very fast at helping me recruit and thank all of these donor prospects and people that give. So I want to publicly thank Dr. Namuwa for his support.
I think it's perfect how you touch all of the contributors, because that's what they need. They want to see that individual touch, and just like you did with that woman that just passed. You were there for her. It's the longing and knowing that they're respected, and you're in touch with them. So that is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you, thank you.
Item... Item 1.7.5, the Building and Grounds Committee Report. Trustee Stamborski.
All right. Hello, everybody, and Happy New Year. So I have actually a lot to talk about, and I have this uncanny tendency to yap. So we're going to try to keep it as short as possible while not talking your ear off. So there was a lot that has been going on here at JJC for the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And for closeout, we've been working on the AHU replacement and the CDB project. In design, right now, we have facade and exterior repairs, the WAEC animal wing, and the AHU replacement. In design, there's also the Honors College, as was highlighted in the last board meeting. In construction, we have the HHVAC unit replacement still, the DHW tank and irrigation piping, interior painting, the Vet Tech addition, the Mental Health and Wellness Center, pin that, I'm going to come back and talk to it in just a moment, the city center chiller curb repair. And out for project bid right now, we have parking lot improvements, WAEC restroom remodel, and the automotive exhaust. So the big-ticket item here that I am super excited to talk about is the Mental Health and Wellness Center, which has been under construction for quite some time now. And the Buildings and Grounds Committee recently got a tour of the location. It's a newly created and a soon-to-be-occupied mental health space, and it's truly impressive. This project reflects our board and college's commitment to understanding student needs and taking meaningful action. So thank you for your support in making this vision a reality. And a formal tour of the space is planned for our February board meeting, when the space will be fully operational. So new additions to that mental health space are going to be a welcome and reception area, student wellness and counseling offices, relaxation rooms, a group therapy room, training rooms. Outside, there's going to be a labyrinth and a zen garden for walking around in the early spring and summer. And then there's going to be also dual access from both inside the building and outside the building. The center itself is actually in a more, not, it's not in the way. It's not like where OSA is, where OSA has like tons of cross-traffic, and everybody can wave and say hi to Amy. It's the Mental Health and Wellness Center is a little bit off to the side, which offers students some privacy when they go and have those meetings. When I was taking the tour, another thing that struck me as very important and something I really liked a lot is, I'm a big fan of more incandescent-style lighting, because it gives the room a much warmer kind of feel to it. It's more like a fire crackling next to you rather than like harsh fluorescent lighting. And for a mental health and wellness space, especially in like February, right around now, that can be extremely welcome for a student that's been having a hard time. So I thought it was a fantastic addition to the space. The design process was guided by a challenge from Dr. Namuwa to explore best-in-class wellness spaces at other institutions and incorporate their best practices here. The result is a thoroughly-designed space with a soothing color palette, calming carpet patterns, and white noise machines to protect privacy. So when students are having conversations in rooms, the white noise stops any of that conversation from potentially leaking out. So it helps to provide a sense of calm, and also, students can't hear what's going on on the outside of the room, too. So it helps to bring them into that space, both physically and mentally. So the project costs and funding, the total cost of the project was $1.25 million, and that includes design fees, construction expenses, access to control and security, furniture and fixtures. And notably, $694,000 of that project cost, which is roughly about 55-ish percent, is being offset by grant funding from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Activity. That's a huge amount, that grant, which goes to offset those costs in a way that makes it even more affordable for JJC to provide this to the community. And looking ahead, we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and an open house for this best-in-class phase. Most importantly, we are thrilled for students to begin using and benefiting from this incredible resource. In addition to the board and administration, thank you all across all of campus for everyone who worked so hard to make this space a reality for our students. So thank you very much. Finally speaking, this was a, not from B&amp;G chair, but as trustee Stamborski and even Joshua Stamborski, before I sat in this seat, I was a student trustee. I was in that seat, actually, right next to me, to my left. And this was a major goal of mine. I come off, right off of the pandemic in 2020, and mental health was a, and still is, a huge issue that plagues college students, considering the amount of stresses of work of coming off of high school, trying to figure out what you're going to do with the rest of your life. Having a space like this is incredibly important. And I am thrilled to see that something that I gave, just a little nudge when I was a trustee, I spent the majority of my time advocating for a space like this. And it makes me so incredibly proud to see this come to fruition. So I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in this project. Even the tiny little nudge I gave at the beginning, this was a fantastic endeavor. So thank you to everyone. That would be it for my report.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Item 1.7.6, the Board Policy Committee Report. Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes, thank you. So for this particular meeting, we have two readings that are going to be part of the New Business, Old Business, Under 4.1. It's going to be 4.1.1, the student, the trustees' travel budget. For this particular policy, we just cleaned up the language, and it will have information that you have already seen before. The second policy that you're going to be able to see is 4.1.2. That is going to be the parking and motor vehicle codes. This is something that we presented at the last meeting, but we just made a quick correction on making sure that it met our standards. And we just cleaned up the language a little bit. The other reading that you're going to find that is up for approval this month is going to be under the New Business and Old Business 4.2. It's going to be specifically item 4.2.1. That is going to be the sale and disposal of college property. This is a policy that we have been talking about for several months. You will see that this is up for second reading. We did clean up the language. We highlighted the role of the Senior Director of Business and Acciliary Services and also the role of the trustees when it comes to the sale of any material that we have here on campus. So that will be up for the second reading for this particular policy. And that'll be all. The Board Policy Committee will be meeting again next month, and will bring additional readings for additional items for first reading at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.7, the Finance Committee Report. Trustee Morales.
There was no Finance Committee meeting yet. Thank you.
Item 1.7.8, the President's Report. Dr. Namuwa.
Chairman Budzinski and members of the board and members of the JJC community. And I had, I started taking notes here as everyone was kind of sharing all of the different successes. And I, you know, got chills multiple times as different individuals got up to kind of, you know, share some of the things they're responsible for. You know, as trustee Stamborski shared, and he was student trustee advocating for a space for students when he was a student, and now to kind of see that come full circle, that gave me chills. It also gave me chills when Dr. Farmer is up here, because this board has been through it as we've, you know, seen the success of the restart and now into the modernization and optimization. And just to think that we're a year away from the successful implementation. And, Trustee Lee, that was, you know, you're reading many of the cabinet's minds. You know, I see different levels to specific outcomes. And as I exert influence as the president, you know, there's, I want. How about I do it this way? I want, I need, and I expect. The December 2025 date is one that I expect. And I'm fully confident, and so I would upgrade the hopeful to a certain level of confidence. And, you know, I'm thankful, as I reflect on Happy New Year, Chairman. I should have started with that. My apologies. And as I kind of reflect on my time here, and I'm thankful that my leadership has resonated, and we've been able to do some great things. I'll loop back to this at the end, just this concept. I'm going to toss all that credit back to the people who tossed the credit to me. When I think about Kristi's influence in Joliet and the surrounding communities, she's been doing this work for 20 years, and her reputation in the community is stellar. Her leadership of the foundation, you know, going from $6 million all the way up to a foundation that is currently at 40, will be at 45, and will, very soon after, reach $50 million, is certainly something, you know, to celebrate. When I listen to our students speak, just the passion they have for JJC. You know, Kurt reminded us that our students will be prominent people one day. It's a message that I shared at the state of the college, because many of you prominent people are sitting on this dais and in the audience and in and around some of the prominent spaces or spaces reserved for prominent people all around the counties we serve, and JJC is a special place. And I guess my point in all of that, Chairman, is I'm thankful to be here despite it being a low of zero degrees. I'm thankful to be the president of JJC. With that, I have several things. We welcomed all of our employees back to campus. A few hundred of us were in the event center, celebrating the return from the holiday break. And, you know, I'm going to transition here to a video that I'd like to share with the trustees. The college has seen this already, but I thought I'd share it with you. Bear with me. It's a couple minutes long, but it's a project we're working on.
Aloha and welcome to Joliet Junior College. I'm Klein Namuwa, and I proudly serve as the 10th president of JJC. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the JJC community. JJC is the nation's very first community college. You see, we started the phenomenon that is the Modern American Community College right here in Joliet, Illinois, in 1901. At JJC, we honor all aspects of your identity, and we strive to demonstrate that to you. We know that your people before your employees, your mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles, all of those things, before your deans, directors, custodians, campus police officers, success coaches, or professors. Also, at JJC, there continues to be a ban on two things. Jason Momoa is still not allowed on campus. See Tiana Namuwa for details. And pineapple is still not allowed on pizzas, or if it is then, we will never call it Hawaiian pizza, because Hawaiians don't put pineapple on pizza.
It's true. Hawaiians don't put pineapples on pizza, but that's not me, Chairman. That is not me. So I'm really challenging... I'm really challenging the college community to, well, number one, to demonstrate where the technology is at right now. That is a complete AI version of me. So I've just warned the college community that if a video comes out shutting down campus for the next few months, it's probably Cyber Klein, and it's not me. I've been challenging the college community to think about what college was 50 years ago, what college is today, and then what college will be in the year 2075. And I asked the staff to generate a version of me, and that's what you'll see on the screen. I'm not gonna leave it up there for long. Right. I'm not, I know, I'm not gonna leave it up there for long. And that's all AI-generated as well. So the college community had an opportunity to see a video of me in the year 2075, talking about what the future of higher education might look like. The last part of this, as we roll this out, I feel like we're doing it in a very responsible way. We've got an AI committee, cross-functional AI committee, that's developing policies and procedures and guardrails, if you will, for the responsible and ethical use of artificial intelligence. But we fully realize and recognize that our students are using AI, whether ChatGPT or Copilot or another version of artificial intelligence. AI is here to stay, and it's incumbent upon us to understand its capabilities and understand how it could be used to create the future of higher education. And trustees, the college community has seen this. The image over on the right-hand side is an interactive avatar of the 10th president of JJC. I'm not going to demonstrate this, but I did in real time at convocation, and trustee Queenie was there, and trustee Queenie saw the interaction. I asked this interactive avatar who his wife is, and he responded with Tiana, "How many kids do you have?" "Five." "What are their names?" Barely pronounced them correctly, but Cyber Klein's not perfect, but he's been trained on pages and pages of data. He knows everything about JJC. In real time, I asked him about 12 by 12 by 12, asked him about entrance requirements to the nursing program, for example. So I want the board to start thinking about some of the applications of artificial intelligence. And I'm gonna paint a picture for you that I did not paint for the college community and maybe just painted for a few of the members of the cabinet. I want you to visualize wearing a set of glasses, an augmented reality AI set of glasses, and walking into the A building for the very first time. I want you to visualize as you walk into the A building, being greeted by a cyber version, an interactive avatar AI version of Dr. Farmer, telling you all about federal financial aid and the services that we have to support students. And as you walk down the hallway, you might be, you might encounter a cyber digital version of Dean Butler, talking about some of the services that we offer out of the Center for Multicultural Access and Success. And it wouldn't just be a pre-recorded version of Dean Butler, it would be an interactive avatar of Dean Butler that you could then ask questions and receive responses. So when we think about the future of higher education, my hope is that JJC faculty and staff are exploring its possibilities and see a future whereby we not necessarily bow down to our robot overlords, but we certainly, certainly understand what they're capable of. Chairman, we've, I've modified this structure of this report, my monthly report here, to include our enrollment data and just give you an image here and encourage the trustees and the college community not to get too excited about the numbers you're seeing. They're promising, sure, but upon closer review, you'll see that this year, we entered our dual-credit numbers quicker. We're getting better, and the systems that support dual-credit, specifically dual-enroll, are helping us enter data quicker. So shout out to the Office of Dual Credit for that bump, and you'll see that that bump is because of dual-credit. I wanna pause here and just celebrate a moment of success. Dr. Farmer, over the break, in late December, was awarded the Education Award for her many years of service and tremendous service to the community, the education community, by the national hookup of Black women at their annual Founder's Day event. Chairman and trustees, will you join me in congratulating Dr. Farmer for that prestigious award? So thankful for Dr. Farmer's leadership. Wanna give a couple of shout-outs here, just around the district, I wanna share with the trustees sort of some of the things I'm connected to, involved in. The Morris Hospital YMCA, you'll see pictured in the lower right-hand corner there, CEO Tom Dome. And behind Katie Leclerc, the president and CEO, is the Morris Hospital section of that YMCA, and behind that room is a fully functional rehab space for Morris Hospital. And what's really impressive is they have a set of double doors, automatic double doors, that when patients complete their rehab, they walk right over to the Y and can become Y members and start exercising and working out. So just wanna thank Katie for having me on her board and allowing me to be a part of the Y's expansion in that way. Really exciting thing for the city of Morris, really exciting thing for both Morris Hospital and the YMCA as well. Now, the images in the upper left and the upper right are images of this year's Foster Palooza event. I wanna send a quick shout-out to my family. You'll see Ryan Queenie there in the upper left-hand corner, and you'll see trustee Nancy Garcia-Guian, and Francisco as well, volunteered to help over 180 children, with parents there, 250 total. And for anyone who's been at this event, you know how special it is for foster families to come here, play games, win prizes, go through some of the items that are donated by not only the cabinet but many other organizations. I do wanna just give a special shout-out, she was here earlier, Margot Underwood, really runs this event and just does a fantastic job. I think just another way that JJC serves the communities in and around our district. Chairman, Christie mentioned this and referenced this. If you haven't had a chance to subscribe to the podcast, please do, because Jen Davis does an outstanding job running this podcast or hosting it, rather. This is John Williams. As Christie mentioned, host on WGN Radio AM 720 out of Chicago, walked these halls and has several fascinating stories from the bridge, and another fascinating story about when he played basketball for JJC. I won't ruin it, but I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to not only Jen Davis but John Williams. He took nearly 10 minutes talking about JJC on his radio show earlier this week. It was fantastic. So, John, if you're out there, I know your audience is much larger than those who watch the board meeting. Thank you so much for sharing your story with the JJC community. I wanna give a quick shout-out to my colleagues on the Community Leadership Board at St. Joe's Hospital. We had our holiday party recently, and as St. Joe's Hospital transitions yet again to another ownership group, our group will have some expanded responsibilities, and we fully recognize how important St. Joe's Hospital is. In addition to the other entities in our region, like Silver Cross Hospital, like Morris Hospital, like many other partners, St. Joe's is Joliet Healthcare, and I'm proud to sit on that board and will assist Barb Martin, our CEO, in the transition from Ascension Healthcare to Prime Healthcare. And Prime Healthcare has committed to investing some additional resources, so I expect to see some drastic changes, some capital improvements to, to St. Joe's. And Chairman, what I've decided to do is include an employee spotlight section to the president's report here. Wanna give a shout-out in the lower left-hand corner to the Office of Institutional Advancement. Each year, they run the president's Holiday Basket Extravaganza, raising thousands of dollars for student scholarships in addition to my scholarship. So I wanna just take a moment, and onstage, I was joined by Richmond Osebonso, who is the first Namua scholar, and Kainoa as well, read the names of the winners of each basket. At the top there, I've made it a tradition, every Christmas Day, Kainoa, Tiana and I, and whoever else we can pull with us, on Christmas Day, we travel to the JJC Campus Police Department, recognizing that safety and security of our students is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 365-days-a-year job. So we drop off cookies to whoever's there, and it's always Detective Echols, it's always Sergeant Luttrell, they're there every single, they may or may not have been watching football, I'm sorry to say that, kidding, kidding. We appreciate them being here on a holiday to keep our campuses safe. In the lower right-hand corner, pictured there, again, a tradition over the holiday break, is I stop in to see Sergio, and this year to see Connor, who's new to our team. That's our payroll department. And everyone else is off-campus. It is Sergio, it is Connor, Jeff Heap shows up later with lunch, like a good leader and manager should do, but I wanted to stop by and just acknowledge them for getting all of our 1,200 active employees paid over the holiday break. So Sergio and Connor, thank you very much. Next one is a bit of a heavy-heart notice here. Chairman, I mentioned that we'd have a second moment of silence here, and I just, I take a moment. You know, for the past three years, Storm was an integral part of the JJC, not only the JJC Police Department, offering comfort, fostering connections throughout the campus community. Storm's warm and gentle demeanor, despite the images you'll see next when I click this button, made him just a beloved presence on campus. From the third floor all the way to the J building and every stop in between, Storm was loved by all, beloved in fact, had a presence within the campus police department and all across campuses, a favorite among students, staff, and visitors alike. I wanna take a moment to acknowledge Sergeant Chris Luttrell, who shared Storm with us for those many years. I'm gonna take a moment, and if she's willing to do so, ask Storm's mom, Susan Bell, to stand and be recognized for sharing Storm with us for all those many years.
Storm in the boardroom.
We do have a picture, Chairman is showing me a picture of Storm in the boardroom. Storm will be deeply missed across the college community, and Susan, thank you for sharing Storm with us. I understand, I'm gonna get it together, I promise. I understand some of you may be traveling to, as some on this board have done in the past, may be traveling to my ancestral homeland soon. And so with that in mind, I wanted to teach you some Hawaiian words when you're there, okay? The first is mahalo, means thank you. I think that will come in handy. The second is laulima, the direct translation is many hands, many hands. And the third is an ancient Hawaiian proverb, and this is the loop-back that I promised, Chairman, at the beginning of my remarks here. With many hands, great things are possible. So when I think about all the great things we've done, you know, I think about all the people in this room, I think about the ways that this board has supported some of our key and signature initiatives, and I have great pride in all of that. Final statement, Chairman, final statement. You know, at JJC, as we, you know, transition, as some of our students have shared, you know, whether it be transition at the federal government level, transitions locally or at the state level, kind of that, you know, managing and facilitating and developing and maintaining relationships with all of those different entities, all of whom influence JJC, just like to make a brief statement about, and really affirming the core values of JJC, as Chairman, you've heard me do many times, and this board has heard me do many times, that at Joliet Junior College, we remain committed to ensuring that our campuses are not only places of learning, but also safe and secure environments. Safety at JJC extends beyond the physical security a campus police provides. It means fostering a community where all students feel welcomed, respected, and their identities celebrated. And it's important to remind the college community that we have established a robust set of policies and practices to ensure that JJC remains a safe and supportive place for our increasingly diverse population and the vibrant communities we serve, because JJC is more than just a college. It's a community where every voice is valued, every identity is honored, and every student is empowered to succeed. And with that, Chairman, I'll yield back. Thank you for the opportunity to share some other things we're doing at JJC.
Is that your 2075 slide?
Oh, we cannot go back, I'm sorry. It doesn't work that way.
Aloha and welcome to Joliet.
Oh, great, now you have to hear me.
I'm Klein Namua, and I proudly serve as the 10th president of JJC.
I wish I could stop the video. Go ahead.
It's a pleasure to welcome you to the JJC community.
You would think I was doing just to take an easy shot at you in that warm-up that's still 50 after 50 years.
That's right. It's aged after 50 years.
But what I wanted to point out, this is for Kelly, the logo still is being used 50 years from now.
I was gonna, I was actually gonna ask to come back to this slide too, because I was gonna point out that I'm glad the AI predicted a little bump in federal funding. It looks good.
Nice. Okay, nice, okay. Thank you, everyone, Chairman. I'll yield back, I'll yield back.
Item 1.8. At this time, the Chair requests a motion to go into closed session for discussion under 2C1 and 2C21 for about 30 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick? Motion carries.
At this time, I'm gonna read item 1.9, which is Return to the Public Session. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborski?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Are you voting yes or no?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on December 11, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10.2, The Approval and Release of the Minutes of the Closed-Session Meetings Held on April 5, 2023, August 16, 2023, August 23, 2023, September 13, 2023, October 18, 2023, November 13, 2023, November 15, 2023, December 13, 2023, January 17, 2024, January 31, 2024, February 14, 2024, March 27, 2024, April 10, 2024, May 15, 2024, May 22, 2024, June 26, 2024, and July 17, 2024, and for the destruction of the verbatim record of the closed-session meetings held on February 1, 2023, February 15, 2023, March 15, 2023, April 5, 2023, April 12, 2023. April 5, 2023, April 12, 2023, May 10, 2023, June 14, 2023, and to find that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes. So at this time, the Chair's requesting the, or motion for the approval and release of the minutes of the closed session meetings held on August 16, 2023, August 23, 2023, September 13, 2023, October 18, 2023, November 13, 2023, November 15, 2023, December 13, 2023, January 31, 2024, February 14, 2024, March 27, 2024, April 10, 2024, May 22, 2024, and June 26, 2024, and July 17, 2024, and the destruction of the verbatim records of the closed session meetings held on February 1, 2023, February 15, 2023, March 15, 2023, April 12, 2023, May 10, 2023, June 14, 2023, and to find that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes.
Motion to amend?
No.
No?
Just, just so moved. Motion to accept.
You're moving, so you're gonna be the?
He already did, I'm motion to accept.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Second.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Abstain.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Abstain.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.11, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item point, or 1.12, approval of the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to have two items pulled.
Okay.
3.1 and 3.2.1.
Okay.
I'd like to have 4.1.2, or we're gonna talk about that under old and new business, 4.1.2 isn't a part of the consent agenda, so just 4.2.1.
4.2.1?
Yeah.
Any additional items? Nope, okay.
Okay, we're ready for vote.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
The reason I'm bringing it up as a concern, question, or discussion, is I want you to bring attention to the Illinois Community Colleges Trustees Association, our second half of our membership dues, which is $15,169, I'm only noting it so that you seek us later in trustee update, I'll address that. And then the other issue was the KGG legal bill again, over $15,000 that I'm concerned about our legal bills. That's it, thank you.
Ready for a vote?
Trustee Lee? Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
I am gonna vote yes, because it is important that we pay our legal bills, especially when we have higher legal bills because of trustees deciding to pursue legal action and so we have to respond to that. So of course we're gonna have higher legal bills, so yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Item 3.2.1, the RFP for lobbyist services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
By, Dr. Namu, do you mind, you gave me your response back because I was concerned, could you just give your response back to me so they all know what I was concerned about and why the need is there, because we haven't done it before in the last 10, 15 years, we've only used state level of Julie Currie, could you just expand upon the grant issues and all that that I brought to you, that I was questioning about?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, Trustee, Chairman Bazinski and Trustee Broderick, thanks for allowing us to highlight this specific request for proposal. And before I address Trustee Broderick's question specifically, I think it's important to note that the college has received exceptional lobbying services over the past 10 years. And when this transition to a different lobbying firm becomes official, we intend to honor the contributions of Julie Currie. As many of you know, Julie served us for, as I mentioned, 10 years, was instrumental in securing state-level resources for the city center campus, for example, $19 million, I believe is the number. And Trustee Broderick, I'll use that example to transition and focus on, and I'll sort of tee up Karen Kissel and Kelly Roder tonelli here, on the state-level support. What Trustee Broderick has brought to your attention tonight is the expanded lobbying efforts. This is a very strategic, ambitious goal of JJC, that no longer will our lobbying services be confined to state-level lobbying, but this expanded scope includes federal lobbying support. And Trustee Broderick, if you'll allow, and Chairman Bazinski, if you'll allow, me to include either Karen Kissel or maybe we'll start with Kelly Roder tonelli, Trustee Broderick, to kind of highlight that expanded scope.
Good evening, Trustee Broderick, I do appreciate the question because you're right, I've been around as long as you have and have worked very closely with Julie and to just emphasize what Dr. Namu said, she's done excellent, excellent work for the college. When it came time for us to just reassess where are the opportunities were, we decided that there particularly were opportunities at the federal level that we weren't necessarily pursuing. And, and when you have a firm that can give you multiple resources instead of one person, that's helpful. And when I talk about searching for additional opportunities, these are key funding opportunities for Joliet Junior College through federal agencies, that could be anything like the Department of Labor, the Department of Energy, obviously the Department of Education, we have a recent Hispanic serving institution designation that we just talked about today, gives us the opportunity to seek many, many additional dollars and monies in funding. So I do think that this next step will pay dividends.
Trustee Broderick, does that address your, your question?
It does, but I think you should also mention too about the BEP, because I think that's critical, that we mention that, because that is something that stands out, and I think that the public should know that we are addressing the BEP issue too by doing this.
Yeah, thank you. Chairman Bazinski and Trustee Broderick, thank you for the opportunity to do that. Highlighted in 3.2.1 is the fact that point of different strategies is indeed a BEP vendor, and I'm just gonna put Karen Kissel on deck here to just highlight some of the things that we're doing. This will certainly, you know, keep us at the forefront of BEP conversation statewide.
In every RFP that we issue, we identify that we're looking for our vendors to be BEP certified or work with BEP certified subcontractors and focus on diversity and equity in their own organizations. We use that as a metric in every single evaluation we do for every single RFP that's issued. That's in addition to all the work that our procurement team does across the state with other community colleges, with ICCB, to advocate for BEP vendors and to bring them forward and to introduce them to Joliet Junior College.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was all worth noting and I thank you for allowing me to allow you all to discuss with and bring up those points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same, thank you.
Did we have a motion on a second on that one?
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next pulled item is 4.2.1, which is policy 13.04.00, it's a second read of the sale and disposal of college personal property.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So we have been talking about this policy for months, the changes made again are completely different actually than what was in our last board book and proposed. The changes include damaged property may be disposed of immediately without board notice or approval, denying myself and other trustees the ability to fulfill our fiduciary duty to our constituents. For college purposes, it also states for college purposes, leaving ambiguity regarding third-party organizations. I would like to remind the board and inform the public of my experience with a third-party organization where I was offered a position and I believed there to be possible nefarious activities surrounding the sale and disposal of property in regards to that third-party organization and advised by our previous counsel not to take the position, at which time I respectfully sent an email stepping down as the Director of the Renaissance Center. I cannot approve a policy that removes oversight from the board over a process, I am fully aware nefarious activities can happen.
I appreciate that concern, Trustee Lee, however, I do have confidence in the administration's procedures to oversee that and so that there are, so that we are sure that there is no nefarious activities that are taking place and that we are doing our due diligence and being fiduciary, you know. We are giving up our fiduciary duty to the administration, so that is a big deal. That's, that's what we're elected to do, is to look over financial situations and what we are doing, especially when it says for college purposes, when this, when these, when this equipment that was trying to be disposed of in not okay ways and based, like, you guys, I'm not gonna sit here and continue to go through this, this is wrong and you are approving a policy where that third-party organization can do whatever they want because this says for college purposes, not for third-party purposes, this is not okay, it's not.
Says here the Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services will determine, doesn't say anything about a third-party person having any authority over college property.
But we don't get to see it, and how do we know that that, yeah, I like Matt, but you know what, Matt might not always be here. That's where.
Have we gone back to the forensic, have we gone back to the forensic review that was done, the forensic audit that was needed because of the problems that went on? Because that is still a concern, I see where she's coming from, because that forensic audit that we had done identified things that should never have, should never have happened, things that lost, things that were gone, things that weren't accounted for, I have a concern too.
I mean, I just wanna read this policy, personal property owned or leased by Joliet Junior College shall be used only by college employees in performance of assigned job duties and responsibility. So how does that, I mean, then this is literally negating all third-party, and where is the policy for our equipment and our deals with our third-party organizations? Because this is college purposes, when we're talking, but they're not using it for college purposes, they are using that property for the third-party organization purposes. This policy, we need to go back to the originally policy, there was no reasons for all of these changes to be in here, other than to give that open and ambiguity for them to dispose of property in nefarious ways. This is wrong. Again, this is where we have Senior Director of Business and Auxiliary Services, we employ one person, that is Dr. Namu, and we have confidence in the staff that they are.
I don't.
They are overseeing the disposal of things that are damaged or undamaged that we no longer need. So I don't see an issue with this, I don't think that we're losing control, I honestly don't. Any other discussion?
Nope.
We're ready to vote then Karen.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
When I read this, unfortunately, I don't quite understand what, what you're saying , Michelle, Trustee Lee, but it says, it, I think it's clearly stating that we will have.
Why do you think they took me off the policy committee and put you on when you don't know what's going on?
Discussion is over.
Yes. I'm sorry, it is over with, yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Item 4, 4.1, which is policy 01.41.00, trustee travel budget, first read. No conversation, I'll move to 4.1.2, which is policy 11.04.00, parking and motor vehicle codes, first read.
So my concern with this one is all, I mean, we are raising the fees on all of our, I mean, does this go for students, faculty, staff, and anyone? So we're raising all of the fees by, the fine is $30, and if you don't pay it after the due date, then it would be $60. And I mean, that's just on, on these, when some of them go from 35 to 40 to 80, I was just wondering, what is the change in these fees? Did we have like a huge jump in how much it costs to tow people's vehicles if they park in the wrong places? I mean, I don't think that this is good for our students, if they get these tickets, they literally may not wanna come. I mean, not that they should be parking in these places, obviously in front of fire hydrants and things, but I mean, I had a kid, I went here, I might have parked outside and ran inside really quick while my, you know, teenager sat in the car, like, I just don't think that, why are we raising these fees so high? Where is this money gonna go and where will it be at the bottom of the budget so I can see it?
Chairman Bazinski and Trustee Lee, I'm gonna toss this one to Karen Kissel for now to address, so thank you.
The Police Department benchmarked our fees against other community colleges and hasn't raised these fees in a while. There is a line item in the budget that rolls up under the Police Department where all of the fees go to, and this money has been accruing and they were able to buy a, you know, purchase a vehicle over the last few years based on the amount of money that has accrued over the last five or six years in this account.
I don't agree with taxing our students, faculty, and staff for accidentally parking in places that they probably just did it one time or another to buy vehicles for the college, I'm sorry, we can put that in the budget.
There is an appeal process, there's a committee that's, that is appeal, that is appeal process.
As a single mom, I'm sorry, as a single mom with two children, when I went here, I would have never been able to keep up with that appeals process and actually go through it. And, I mean, I've never received a fine, I'm not saying, but the fact that you're saying that we saved up enough money to buy a vehicle, that's what we're really spending this money on, guys, come on.
We have to have regulations and I am, thank you for having an appeals process and I'm sure that we do give grace when people have financial hardship and like Trustee Lee says, you know, sometimes it's something that, you know, we maybe accidentally parked somewhere. But I think that we do have to have regulations to maintain, you know, spaces free from parking, we have to have rules. So as long as we have an appeals process and we can evaluate it and do case by case, then. and we can evaluate it and do case by case, then yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. I also, I just, I can speak to the appeals process as I do sit on the parking appeals committee through my roles in student government, as I have for several years and semesters now. We do take into consideration financial hardships and situations and all of that. And we, I know the police do make the appeal, the police do make the appeals process very clear to students in what is an accepted appeal and what is not. And when we do, we do often discuss that if we were a different college or a different community college, our fees would be much, much higher if we look at the different colleges in the area, what they're charging for tickets.
So now we're just, you know, becoming like every other college.
I, yeah. And I do see your point too, to where, is there a way we can make sure this money that we're allocating for tickets is being allocated towards student needs instead of such.
A vehicle.
Yeah, I do see that point. I, two points. To the vehicle point, a lot of the money is fungible. So even if it isn't directly allocated out to a vehicle, a lot of that money still goes roughly to the same place. So it's a little bit more complicated than just like where we are, even though the funds directly go there in the line item.
We as a board.
Just give me a moment. And then the second thing is that, yes, the cost of towing has gone up because in the last couple of years, there's been an increase in the cost of living. So as a result of that, a lot of these have gone up like $5 or $10, which has been in line with the cost of living from 2022 to now. So it's actually, we're keeping it the same. We're not actually increasing it, not really. It's the same.
A lot of these, you said, I would just.
Wait, let you continue.
They didn't go up by five or 10.
Continue, please, order.
He's doing misinformation. The policy is in front of me. At no point did they go up by $5.
Trustee Lee, trustee Stan Borski has the floor.
From 2022, which is when the policy was last reviewed, to now, there's been an increase in the cost of living. And a lot of these numbers go up about what you would expect for a cost of living increase. So it's actually not an increase in the amount that it's been, that it's costing. It's really just keeping it the same. So it's not a flat increase for the students. It's paying essentially what you would be paying a couple of years ago. So it's not actually an increase at all.
So most of the parking spots or anywhere you see on campus where you are not allowed to park usually is designated that way for safety, whether it's emergency vehicles or, you know, responders being able to approach a building without having to worry who's or what behind it, for fire trucks to get to the door as quick as possible, a paramedic to get as quick as possible, along with no parking signage that exists, there's got to be some responsibility on the driver. We can't say, oh, well, you know what? We have to make an exception for them. I don't think.
The original fines are a consequence for the driver. You're upping them so that we can buy cars for our police force, which we already actually this year approved for more budget to go to the police force and to buy cars for them and to get all new things.
Excuse me, giving my time back to myself. There's a reason for no parking, and it is not. We don't put campus no parking spots. And Chief Campbell can help me with this. Have we ever created a spot just so we can find somebody? No.
Raising, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, but raising these fines, $20 and $40 on some of them is a little bit outrageous to me. I could have saw a $5 raise in some of them. But again, I asked, where is, do we have, we had a significant raise in how much we need to tow people, and it's not that. It is literally going to buy vehicles that we approved to buy vehicles and give more money to the police department. So I'm just saying I don't see a reason in the raise in the price. You could keep the policy, you could keep the fees. I don't see the point in charging our teachers, faculty, staff, and student more money because the economy has raised, because they probably don't have money for fines for us to buy cars with.
We'll go ahead and pass the mic over to you, please.
Sure. I just, I completely understand the concern. I will say, we are very compassionate in the way that we police and the way that we do even issue fines up to and including the appeals process. Now, when we did this, we did do it very, very thoughtfully. We have not raised, if memory serves, raised these fees since 2011. So we are, when we did our study, we are still marginally less than some of our counterparts. So, you know, when we raised them, it's still nowhere near a part with some of our other counterparts.
All right. I stand corrected about 10 years' worth of inflation than if you want to account that. So that's, yeah, it's still pretty low.
Inflation doesn't matter in this because they're not having, this is not, we're making money off of this.
I'm talking about keeping the fines the same because you have the moral question of, okay, like, we want to make sure that we have fire lanes and we have police officers that are able to get into the building, or someone needs to really leave in an ambulance. That's why that cost is there. That's, it's to show, it's a costume cur on to the community to say, hey, like, this is a required space that needs to be preserved. That, that fine is necessary to deter that kind of people parking.
Just another slush fund for the college.
You can rhetorically phrase it however you would like. That's what it's for.
I would like to add something before we wrap it up and move on. So we do have some things that are set up in order to make it easier for our students, like the appeals process, the way that we are being compassionate and not issuing fines just left and right. So we do have a process. This is a policy that, again, the price had not increased for a very long time, since 2011. So this is the recommendation from the policy board, the policy committee. So based on that information, you can go ahead and decide what your vote will be next month at the second reading. Thank you. Back to you.
So moving on to section five, under reports. 5.2, the representative for the ICCTA, ACCT trustee Diane Harris.
Okay, thank you very much. Happy New Year to everyone. Currently, I have no report. The ICCT, along with the ACCT, will be meeting in February in Washington, DC. And we hope to be able to meet with the legislators and make sure that we can push our goals and agendas forward. So that's, that's basically what's taking place. And then, of course, in March, the ACCT will be holding their general legislative forum, issue, whatever, whatever it's called. We will be there in March and be doing the same thing, pushing for national issues and hopefully to meet with some of the legislators if they're there. And we look forward to going to our president's hometown. So we hope to have a great report when we come back for you. That's it.
Thank you. Item 5.3, trustee updates. I'll start over here with trustee Queenie.
All right. Thank you, chair. So just some updates. I did want to share a little personal news in my life. I started an internship here at the college in the Office of Student Rights and Responsibilities here, working with the Illinois Bureau of Higher Education House Liaison Grant.
Good for you.
And I will be helping, addressing student issues surrounding student housing, housing insecurity and food insecurity around campus. And then this week, I will also be traveling to Heartland Community College on Friday, January 17th, for the Student Advisory Committee meeting, where we will be discussing our, what steps we'll be taking in our addressing or in preparing for the National Legislative Summit in February in Washington, DC, as Diane, or trustee Harris mentioned. And then Sustainability Union also asked me to give a brief update to the board quickly. So I want to share that they have some ongoing projects, including their ongoing BYO campaign with over 100, or they've reached 100 pledges for the campaign as well now. And they will be working with Representative Manley to bring that, the BYO challenge up to the community as well. And then also, JJC was declared an official Monarch Way Station, and they will be getting a sign to put up in the natural areas as well to let people know. And then also, finally, I wanted to finish up by giving a quick thank you to, again, trustee Nancy Garcia again and her husband Felix and Dr. Namol and his family for helping out with the Foster Palooza here at JJC. And I also wanted to share with the board that all the items left in the Free to a Good Home area were donated and were brought to the Fairmont Community Center, where they'll be distributed to families in need. With that, I'll yield back my time, and thank you.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Not very much. I took up all that during the buildings and grounds discussion. So I'll just say best of luck to all the students in the upcoming semester. That would be all.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia again.
Perfect. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy new year. It already started two weeks ago, but happy new year to you all. Also, wanted to wish our students, faculty, and administration an excellent start to this semester. And also remind everyone that JJC is committed to supporting all of our students and also making sure that we're providing different resources and different, anything that they might need in order to be successful on campus and off campus. And we continue to be committed despite changing, potential changing policies at the federal level. So our commitment is still there. So thank you all.
Thank you. Trustee Morales.
Just, I'd like to echo the sentiments of prior trustees. And again, with the change of administration coming next week, we want to ensure that all of our students feel safe, just especially our DACA recipients, our documented and undocumented students. And again, happy new year. Thank you.
Trustee Lee.
Maureen's technically in front of me. Do you want to?
I can wait. I can wait till you guys are all done.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Trustee Lee. I'm sorry, trustee Harris.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to say, in regards to one of the public comments, the students said, I just want students to feel comfortable and know that myself, as a trustee, will definitely support the goals and the missions of the college as it relates to our students' benefit. And we also have to remember that politics speaks for itself, but it doesn't always take action in the way it's presented. So we want to be careful and refrain from fear and just know that the board is here for the college itself. And also, I'm sorry, I missed a convocation. I was celebrating my birthday on January 4th in San Diego, but I did get a good look at the video up there. And also, I took a picture with Storm, and I want to make sure that I get the owner's address or emails. I can send it to her. I was thrilled by the name. I thought it was a wonderful name for a dog. I'm a dog lover. So, but anyway, that's, that's all I have. And I wish all of the faculty and everyone, the students, a great 2025.
Thank you. Trustee Broderick.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all. And one I wanted to address and show my appreciation that Mike McGreal went to Joliet Township and viewed their new culinary department, which is spiriting our partnership with Joliet Township. It's excellent. Their teachers over there are thrilled that Mike McGreal and his team came over. So kudos to Mike McGreal for coming over. Two, could we possibly, since only one is going to the National Legislative Summit, could we please see what the agenda is that you will be presenting to our legislators so that we're, we're all aware of what is being presented? And three, I address the Illinois Community College fee that we're paying the second installment, which is over $15,000. Just so you all know, I did write and have, and it's in print too, that our membership is awarded to community college district boards. When a college, when a board joins the association, members of its board, all of the trustees, become members of the association. And the association, each member, we do have the ability and the member, to be designated by our board to be involved. All trustees of the districts are encouraged and eligible to take part in the work of the association, to serve in all capacities, and to participate in all meetings of the board, of representatives, as even in the various committees. The trustee, there's a trustee education award that is given to trustees for each 15 ICCT seminars completed. The award highlights the dedication of trustees and the importance of trustee education. So we as trustees are all able and should be able to be included in going to these seminars and meetings. In 2020, I was awarded the first educational award with the ICCTA, which I was very proud of. And to continue that, all of us are eligible and should be included in the budget so that all of the trustees have the ability to go to these functions and to learn and to be educated and to become a truly dedicated trustee. Thank you. And good luck to all the students for 2025.
So to conclude, had multiple board members talk about students. We moved the student trustee report to the beginning tonight because we thought it was important that we hear from the students early and not at the end when half the people have gone home. We appreciate you coming and speaking publicly. That microphone's always there for you, and you have to know to feel comfortable to come to us at any point. We are listening. Going back to who's welcome and who's not welcome on campus, you've heard me say it from this chair, and I talked to so many people on this board. We're going to stand outside with anybody at that door if they think they can't get into the building, and we'll walk them in ourselves. So we do believe everyone is welcome here. Everyone should be comfortable here. And if they're not, the board will be involved with it. We will get involved to get people in the door. We're not shunning anyone away from the door. There's nothing on any of our agenda items that say exclude these people. Nothing. So again, thank you for coming and speaking to us. Thank you for appearing, you know, monthly. I know you're keeping an eye on us, and we appreciate it. We like being held accountable by our students because that's what we're all here for. So thank you. And at this point, I'm asking for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We're adjourned.